Test, test.
I will call to order our monthly city council meeting of Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four approximately seven P. M. Let the records reflect as an update that all council members are present and accounted for along with our city administrator, Mr. Seth Duncan, our head herder, our city clerk, council clerk, Cindy Miller, along with our city attorney, Mr. Daniel Hughes, and various department heads who all congregated in the back row except for David who's on the front. There's stories about that, but I won't go into those at this time. And of course, members of our public, we're glad for you to be here also, especially on this balmy Tuesday evening that we scheduled just for this. So appreciate everyone being here. First item, I called to order the welcome, which I just did. Our invocation of pleasure of allegiance would follow our normal rotation. Our city council seat number one, Mr. Matty.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd invite anybody who would like, please bow your heads and pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here. You've given us another year. We're never promised another day, another hour, another minute, but you gave us a year. And here we are, starting twenty twenty four, Lord. Ask that you be with us tonight and throughout the year, that you help give us wisdom, that you always help us to temper our tongues, and that we make decisions for this city that are pleasing in your sight. These things ask in your name. Amen. Now, I'd invite anybody who would like, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, which has one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Matty. Next item proclamation presentations, I would, let me get down front, and I would ask Ms. Christine Ortiz to join me. It's this mic, so I will put it right here. I have it adjusted for Ms. Christine. That, one of the best things I have to do in my role here is various proclamations and presentations. And this will usually a lot of fun to do this one. This one is mixed emotion. And before I get into that, I'll let Ms. Christina, any remarks you want to make prior to the official where he has four four. And she is native to the southern region here. So listen carefully.
Yeah, I need to make sure I speak loud enough so everybody can understand. I was standing here a few years ago, and I am a state farm business owner. I met, I was trying to open my business, figure it out. I knew I wanted to come to Malden, and the first stop that I did was at the Chamber of Commerce to meet the president of the chamber. I was like praying, please make sure this lady likes me. I don't know what this city is going to be. And I was in her office for two hours. And I knew that day that there was no other city for me. And she took me under her wings that that day. And I know she's been twenty-four hours helping business, small business like mine, to grow. And she's leaving a legacy to, not just to be a great community, but be a community with inclusion to everyone. I'm the only Bolivian in South Carolina, so there's a minority of me. But she took me that day under her wings and said, Christina, don't worry, we will, we will introduce you everyone. You're going to work hard. We're going to make sure your business does good. You're investing money, you're borrowing money, and the chamber is going to be. And that day I came out and I told my husband, it's going to be okay. We're in the right town. And I met the mayor and the city and everything. I just want to tell him in behalf of the business pet, thank you so much, because we will not be standing with the Florence city that we have, with the business that we have, without a legacy like yours. And in behalf of our board in the chamber, I know how everybody appreciates you, not only on the advice and mentoring that you gave us in the business lines, to be better leaders in the community, but in a personal level, to be better humans as we are. Well, thank you for giving me some words. Thank you.
And for those of you who don't know, Bolivia is not a neighborhood down Ashmore Bridge Road. Okay? Be sure we understand that. So thank you, Christina, for being here. Ms. Pat Pomeroy, would you join me? I think everyone up here could probably give a thirty-minute presentation on the love and friendship of Ms. Pat Pomeroy, who's been around Malden for a long time. And no one is surprised that it took two hours to sit down and talk with Pat. We've all been there. So it's so good. This one is mixed emotion. I've known this lady a long time. And then in the official capacity as councilman, then later on as mayor, and got to spend more time with her. I would refute anyone who said that the growth that happened in Malden with our businesses and our residents did not have some direct or indirect correlation with Pat Pomeroy. She's been that strong for our community. We appreciate that. And on behalf of this city, whereas Pat Pomeroy was hired as the executive director of the Malden Chamber in two thousand, and whereas Pat Pomeroy has grown the Greater Malden Chamber of Commerce from sixty businesses to three hundred and seventy-five, other than more than that now, reflecting the growth of Malden. And whereas Pat Pomeroy has worked with city officials and local business owners to enhance the business community, whereas Ms. Pomeroy's commitment to public service has played an integral role in the growth, prosperity, and well-being of the city. And whereas the city council and the city staff wish to extend their heartfelt gratitude to Pat Pomeroy for her years of dedicated service, and whereas Pat Pomeroy has taken a well-earned retirement. We'll have to define what retirement is here in a couple of months, won't we? Now, therefore be it proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, mayor of the city of Malden, along with all the residents of our city, and my fellow council members, hereby proclaim that we wish Pat Pomeroy a wonderful retirement and thank her for her dedicated service to the city of Malden dated the sixteenth day of January twenty twenty four. Thank you, Ms. Pat.
I do have to say a few words. First of all, I want to thank you so much for this proclamation to all of you guys. It's been a wonderful twenty-three years for me. I walked in the office, not quite sure what to expect. And we've moved about three or four times with the chamber. And every time, I just have this feeling we're going to keep growing and growing. And for all of you, if you don't know me, I love my job. I love walking into office every day. I love working with every single person. And Christina, thank you for your kind words. I won't ever forget our two-hour meeting. But anyway, thanks again for everything. The memories you all will always be with me. And I'll return to Malden, I promise. And I'll come have lunch with everybody. But anyway, thanks again. And I want to thank my husband, he's sitting over here. He's been a big help as my volunteer. He's my unpaid volunteer. And so I always say yes to come home to me, so he didn't mind volunteering. So but again, thank all of you all so much for your support. And I will be back, I promise. Thank you so much.
Proclamation.
Thank you so much.
Once again, Pat Pomeroy.
I want to say one more thing. I have no family. I don't have any family here tonight. My daughter is snowed in in Nashville. And my son, yeah, ten inches of snow, ten inches of snow. And my son is in court, because he's a judge, not because he's in court for being a criminal. And my daughter-in-law also is in Raleigh, so they couldn't come. But again, I wish they had been here, but Bill's here and all my friends. Well, a few of my friends. I have a lot more friends. But anyway, but thanks again. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next item before us on our agenda is the reading approval of our city council meeting minutes of December the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. These have been in your packet. Are there any noted corrections, adjustments, additions, deletions recommended? Here none, the pleasure of council approval of minutes.
Move for approvals presented.
Matty, is there a second?
Second.
I know I change it up every month. Everybody gets confused which way I'm going to do this. Here are no corrections, anything. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign here none the minutes of city council meeting, December the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three are approved, as submitted. Next minutes were a special called council meeting of January the second, twenty twenty-four. Also in your packet, I noted, I have a approval for Mr. Reynolds' motion to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Allgood. Any corrections, adjustments, clarifications? Here none, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign here none. The motion carries unanimous. Next item before us is our first public comment area. I think Mr. Parrish likes to speak on a couple items that are not on the agenda, so he has agreed to wait to the second public comment on non-agenda items for recognition. So we'll wait to hear from him then. A report from our city administrator, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I've got just a few items for everyone tonight. First off, just wanted to mention that Malden Police Department recently met with the Greater Malden Chamber of Commerce to begin planning for the twenty twenty-four Malden Christmas Parade. This annual tradition will resume in December after being rained out in twenty twenty-three. The primary date for the parade will be December seventh, and December fourteenth will be our planned makeup date in the event of rain or worse, snow. Additionally, due to expected construction on East Butler as part of the Build a Better Butler project, parade route will be moved for the next few years to Holland Road. At this time, event organizers are planning for the parade to begin at the Golden Strip Career Center and terminate at Bridgeway Station. Because of this change, we wanted to begin getting the word out early, and we'll have more information from the chamber as the parade neers. So we're excited about that. Next, benchmark planning was recently selected to facilitate the development of the city's strategic plan. The plan will establish the city's vision and priorities around the issues that matter most. Plan will help align resources with identified strategic initiatives and priorities of the community and serve as a dynamic document utilized by staff at all levels of the organization. Staff recently kicked off this project with Benchmark, and will begin organizing initial focus groups with community leaders, city departments, business leaders, and others. If council has any suggestions on who from the public would be good to serve on a focus group, please let me know as soon as possible. Benchmark is also, or is planning on two focus group meetings in the coming weeks and is preparing a community survey. After the focus groups, Benchmark will meet with council to provide an overview of the process and provide initial issue identification and SWOT analysis. Work will continue through spring, and we can expect a draft strategic plan by the end of the fiscal year, so early summer. And last thing I wanted to mention is that as the calendar turns, we begin preparing for our next budget, just here in the next few months. And so with that, council will be meeting on several occasions over the next few months to set goals, review a proposed budget, and adopt the final FY twenty-five budget. Wanted to list a few meeting dates for for council and for the community. So first off, the goal-setting session will be Thursday, February first, at six P. M. upstairs. Then our first budget workshop will be March fourteenth at six P. M., which is Thursday. And our second budget workshop will be Thursday, March twenty-eighth at six P. M. Then from there, we'll do first reading and a public hearing on Monday, May twentieth at seven P. M., and second reading on Monday, June seventeenth at seven P. M. And that's my report, sir.
Duncan, any questions for Mr. Duncan? Here on next item on our agenda is reports from our standing committees. First up, finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Duncan was kind enough to mention the budget. So look also in your email, Ms. Pump, sorry, Ms. Miller, sent out invites for all of those so that you can have those easily adapted to your calendar, which is helpful for probably not just me. So look for that in your email. Other item I had coming out of committee was, our committee will be looking at the employee handbook in the coming weeks. So certainly take a look through that. We've asked, I've asked Mr. Duncan to send that both electronically and have a hard copy in your mailboxes for us to look through if there's anything in there. If you're not on the committee and there are items of concern for you, please reach out to myself or Mr. Putnam or Mr. Duncan and have those, where we can address those at the committee level. Last thing I had, Mr. Mayor, was for Ms. Pomeroy, you mentioned that you had mixed emotions about Pat retiring, mine or not. Mine are very solidly sad. I don't have mixed emotions in any way about it. So certainly, Ms. Pomeroy, I've known you a very long time also, and I've always appreciated your smile, kindness, and just the general aura that you bring into a room. So that will be missed by me, not mixed at all. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor, and that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. As a point of clarification, mixed emotion means, in a retired person, I understand what retirement can really be fun with. Then the mixed emotion is you wake up one morning, decide to get in politics. That's a different story. Public safety, Mr. or Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would just like to once again recognize public safety and our public works department, Mr. Krailin, for the great job they did with the four-plus inches of rain that we had recently. So as along with Mr. Duncan, they get out in front of that really quick, and it's not something that we take lightly, and we do appreciate it. One other quick thing is I'd like to bring to everyone's attention that Corporal Sutcheck, which we all see out in the community, just recently became certified with car seat installation, which may not sound like a big deal, but apparently we're one of the few cities in the upstate who provide this service, which is a big demand for parents with young children. So kudos to her. Chief, please let her know that we appreciate all of her extra efforts that she has. Lastly, Pat, who knew, I'm going to make this short, I promise, because Pat will go, wait a moment, I have one more thing. Who knew in late December twenty fifteen, when I had been elected before I was sworn in, Pat contacted me to welcome me and to introduce me to the chamber, et cetera. And we have, as most of you know, formed a wonderful friendship over the years. I respect her and appreciate her work for our city more than I can express. Thank you, Bill, for all you've done. You were always in the background, but we know you were the workhorse behind the computer, getting all of those newsletters out, and I appreciate you as well. So wish y'all much happiness. And for me, this is not goodbye. This is, I'll see you soon. We love you.
Thank you, Ms. King. How about worse, Mr. Krailin?
A little bit of my thunder got stolen a moment ago with the rain. That's okay. I did want to compliment the public works department on a great job. I'm not sure if we're going to be needing a boat in the future, but I felt like we might that day. So I want to thank you all for the hard work that you do. Thank you.
Economic planning and development, Mr. Matty.
So this isn't necessarily an economic development matter, but I feel like I need to jump on this as well, because what we had last Tuesday really is not something that we see. As Chris Justice said on WYFF, we got a month's worth of rain in twelve hours. And there's only so, there are only so many places that it can go when it comes down that hard, that fast, and that much. And our public safety, our public safety departments, police and fire, our public works department, everybody, I think everybody in the city, every city department pitched in and made sure that things ran as smoothly as they could and really made the best of an unparalleled event. So I just want to say thanks to everybody for that. But as chair of economic planning and development, I would be remiss if I did not say a very heartfelt thank you to Pat. As president of the Malden Chamber, you have been a real touch point as businesses have come into the city. You have given them a sense of comfort and peace and joy about doing business in, around, and with the city. And Bill does not get nearly the credit that he deserves for all of the work that was done behind the scenes. So I want to say thank you very much, Bill. I also want to say congratulations, Kim. I look forward to that sense of continuity and you building off of a great legacy. And with that, I'll hush him, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Matty. Not for hushing, but thank you for building codes, Mr. Steinbeck.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as updates go, there's not a whole lot going on other than business license renewal season starting up. So obviously, that would be important to remind everyone about. And again, I would like to say thank you to Ms. Pomeroy as well. When I thought about the idea and came to her and said, if I were to do something like run for city council, who should I talk to? And the three-page list that I left with was very, very useful, very appreciative and thankful for all you've done for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Last but not least, recreation, Mr. Allgood.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, we have spring sport registrations going on for baseball, softball, flag football, and lacrosse. That's going to end on January thirty-first. There's some variants in ages, but pretty much up to fourteen. And of course, we've got basketball underway. You can pretty much go to any of our courts, and you will find them completely full. So be sure to go check out a game. And I remember speaking to Pat in my old journalism days back in the early two thousands. So it's always been a pleasure to know you, and good luck in your future endeavors. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. All. Next agenda item, unfinished business. There is none, standing committee items. There is none. We go to new business ordinance, first reading, none. Standing committee items, cultural center, front steps. Ms. Miller, you want to introduce that?
Sure. Council has requested to provide design approval for new front steps at the Malden Cultural Center.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And that's coming out of economic development. And for more information on that, Mr. Matty.
Thank you, Mayor. I would invite J.R. to come on up and share where we are while he's doing that. Well, I'm not going to steal his thunder.
Thank you. Pleasure to be with you. Sorry I wasn't here earlier, under the weather. And so I'm just glad to be standing now here in front of you. So the packet that you have has a design outline. We solicited quotes from a few construction companies to look at tearing out the staircase of the front of the cultural center, replacing it with something that's a little easier to climb. That angle's almost forty-five degrees going into the thing. That's a little hyperbolic, but feels like it when you're going up. So we asked construction companies to give us a quote that had a shallower incline, deeper steps, smaller, shallower steps, go that way. And so Triangle Construction came out, gave a quote of about forty-three thousand, I think is what it was. Procurement Policy says if we get above fifteen thousand, we have to do, we have to do an RFP. So what I'm asking, and staff is asking, I guess by proxy, is that you look at the design that Triangle provided, if it meets your expectations of what that could look like, knowing that we're going to put out to RFP and that there may be some design elements that may change. But overall, the depth, breadth, and incline of the steps will change to make it better for people with bad knees and short little stubby legs to climb up the staircase there. It also includes some lighting elements, so it's a little easier to see at nighttime with our guests coming in and out. But that's, that's about the ask. If you like it, move forward, we'll issue the RFP, get the results back. If not, write the drawing board, see if we can find some other aesthetics we can chase.
So as someone with bad knees and short stubby legs, I move that we approve the overall design for the new staircase.
For someone who's wanted lighting for eight years, I second that motion.
Do you have to ask for a motion or a second? So we've got that part.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I got so excited.
Oh, I understand. That's the one part that wasn't mentioned. So hopefully the discussion now is open. Counsel, Mr. Allgood.
Thank you, Mayor. How many bids did we receive?
Didn't get bids, because we haven't gone through the RFP process. I called, let's see, I got Triangle, came out, looked at it, Sealy came out, looked at it, and I had another concrete contractor that came out and then did not.
We mentioned that it's approximately forty-two thousand. The, it's a, it can be covered as a line item for the safety and security improvements. Do you know how much is in that line item, give or take?
Roughly three twenty-five overall. We've spent about twelve thousand, just under, on the security cameras. So we have about three hundred and fourteen thousand, is that about right, roughly? And then in the memo that I'm assuming was passed out at committee meeting last week, or last two weeks ago, it delineates what dollar amounts were going to be allocated to what project. And so the lion's share of that is for improving the electrical out there, roughly two hundred thousand, we're guessing, and then it kind of drops from there. So this kind of sits somewhere in the middle of the cost ratios.
And then the last question that I have, was there any consideration or discussion about whether or not we needed a ramp there? I know there's ramps around the other sides of the building, but being that this is considered the front door in many respects, did we discuss a ramp option?
We considered it. This fact that we have the side ramps on the side of the building to allow access for wheelchair and handicapped confirmed, we decided to keep it just a staircase, just so that we didn't have additional costs for having the slope. I think it's what, five over one slope ratios? That would have to go way off the sides of the entrance and make it a pretty long jog to get into the building.
I just, just to make a side note, assuming this does go through, that we do make sure we have proper signage to point people in the right direction if they need that ramp access.
Yes, sir.
That's the only questions that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question. It was assuming concrete form, just poured concrete form, and then handrails are going to be provided or no?
That was contemplated. I believe, memory is a little foggy, but I believe there was a consideration of having handrails on the side that did not have a certain height elevation, because I think by code you have to have either certain height or rails that go on top. But so the quote, again, foggy.
Just to include that, because it'll be required.
Right, right.
And that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Anyone else?
That's not down the middle, right, based on this graphic?
I'm sorry, I don't see the graphic.
On our, on our graphic, you can come up here if you need to look at it. There is a black line down the middle. Is that supposed to be a handrail, or what is the purpose of that line? Do you know?
It goes all the way up to the door.
I think he did.
Mr. Mayor, so it will still have to meet all building codes and standards. So this was just kind of more the, the, the design of the stairwell could theoretically change, and that's what we're kind of focused on. But I definitely will still end up having engineered or architecturally designed plans done, but we're really just looking focused on that aesthetic appeal. We'll make sure that there's plenty of signage for ramp this way that indicates.
What's on that comment, Mr. Mayor? I do like the design of it and don't mind cast concrete, but it would be nice to try to tie the piers in or wing walls in as brick, similar, just, just my preference.
In the RFP, we did have a recommendation to try to preserve as much brick as we could, but given that's but given that's 1930s brick, and there's gonna be demolition, it probably will turn to dust when they start to demo it. But we can certainly address that when it comes to the RFP responses.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Thank you, JR. That's a segue into my comment and somewhat chafe at the idea of turning anything into dust. Having been here most of my life, Malden has a history of it. It's a part of our heritage and our historical buildings. We tear it down. This one has withstood fire and a rebuild. I would hope there'd be a priority assigned to maintaining the aesthetics of that facade on the front and as well as much as that brick structure on the left and the right. Not being blessed with stubby legs, I've not really experienced a problem going up and down it other than a lack of lighting. And I found it was better to close my eyes and just count the steps. And so, so my second part of that comment, beyond the comical act that I tried to do, was that if you're gonna install lighting, try to leave that facade on the front there. There's lighting that can be mounted at the ridge level, the gutter level, or whatever, and shine down, and still make it where everyone can see. The ones that are probably trying to transverse the new steps with heels on, shorter legs, might need more lighting, and so, we understand that. That was the jokes.
I don't wear heels, Mayor.
No, they weren't aimed toward town. But from that standpoint, just the aesthetics, I'm hoping we can try to maintain as much of the side mountain, the rails on the existing brick and the thing that's there, and then as we get closer to the bottom. I understand construction, but just, I would hope we would have signed a priority to that and try to maintain as much of that historical look. That some of us did go to elementary school there, and I know that's way back, but it was not back to 1930, okay? Let's clarify that. That's my two cents worth for the staff overview on that. Anyone else? You don't want to rebut my comments?
Um, I did, but it was under my brit- non-tes. I shared with Mr. Mattney. Thank you, it's all good, Mr. Mayor. But I will, if, if you don't mind, I will add to, I agree with what you're, with your comment, with the brick pillars there. And, um, you know, a contractor may be able to find brick that matches better than we all, and, you know, would have ever thought to, to bring it on down. Now, that's gonna come with a cost, but maybe worth getting an estimate or seeing if that would even be possible, because it would be more of a, a grand-type entrance there. But if, yeah, I, I think leaving the pillars there, as the mayor alluded to, is, is a must. And my five-inch heels and myself will go up and down those steps. Just kidding, thank you.
I was just kidding also.
I know.
We're good.
All laughing.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to move the design approval process forward. Staff can proceed in a second. Is there, hearing no other discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign, hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Next item before us, Ms. Miller.
Council has requested to give final approval to the design of Leadership Golden Strip's proposed mural for the Cultures.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Also coming from Economic Development, Mr. Mattney.
So, we can go ahead and get discussion started. I'll go ahead and move approval on the final draft version of the mural panel.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, I heard. Is there any discussion? Only question I have is, in an earlier meeting, I believe in June, we approved $5,000 from the Community Development Fund to Leadership Golden Strip to move forward with this. So, the remaining balance of this approval would be coming from Leadership Golden Strip to match that, or at least to fund that panel. And then, the panels after that would be for further discussion of this council. We're not approving X number of dollars or process throughout the all five, four, is it five panels?
Yeah, yes, sir, and that's correct. So, there was a prior approval of $5,000. The remaining balance will be raised by Leadership Golden Strip, and this does not commit any additional resources for the additional panels at this time. And if we wanted to do that, we would do that either through a budgetary appropriation process for fiscal year '25 or through other means. But this is just for that one panel, kind of the starter panel that's split funded with Leadership Golden Strip.
And my last question, I'm still confused. On which panel is it on the picture you submitted to us? If I'm reading, looking left to right, there's, there's two little ones, and the middle one is a doorway, and there's a section above it?
Yes, sir, you see the three-panel segments there with the two squares and then the long rectangle?
Let's go left to right.
Okay, let's go right to left. It's the third, it's the second panel, right to left.
So, we've got a narrow panel and then a wide panel.
The wide panel.
The bigger, the biggest one.
That's why you kept confusing me every time you, okay. We're talking about this one, right there. Got it, okay. Got a legal opinion also?
Perfect.
Right to left.
Second one.
It is, okay.
There's the pros and cons.
All right, any other discussion?
Mayor, if I may, just clarify a couple things from the last time we met. When we looked at the, the renderings the last time, there was conversation about making sure that all the people who were, or all the businesses that were represented on this gave approval that their business would be represented on it. Was that given?
So, I, I didn't recall that specific. All of these images, we can double-check with Bridgeway, but all of these would be public, considered public domain, because it's art. So, I'm not as worried about any type of copyright infringement and the, so, but if there's a concern on a particular business, we could reach out, but it's, it's an art piece that doesn't, we're not trying to commercially profit off of this, but...
I don't think it was so much Bridgeway, I think it was more like Duke.
Yeah, and, and that's the one, I could see that, but we could reach out, but there's no guarantee that we'll get, but it kind of falls in the public domain.
And so, to clarify, when we're going to approve this, we are approving one panel to go in this largest box, which we have allocated 5,000 for our funding, and the rest will come from Leadership Golden Strip.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood, Mr. Mattney.
I was just gonna point out that as far as, you know, Dukes goes, they now sponsor a postseason bowl game in Charlotte where the winning coach has a giant vat of mayonnaise dumped on his head. So, I, I, I feel that they'd be okay with this.
Mr. Krailin?
The only comment, I'm just looking here, just noticed on the proposed, the artwork here in the Cultural Center there on the stairs, we just proved that we're gonna move change.
I was trying to decide if I was gonna say anything.
Just throwing that out there, may want to think that through, just...
That, that sticker wasn't lost on us either, sir. And so, what we're gonna do is, is based on the feedback, we'll try to preserve as much of those columns as possible, even if we have to flare out the steps around. We'll, we'll try to preserve that as much as...
Mr. Mayor, just, just one question as far as maybe more my curiosity on the timeline for the rest of them? You know, we have one, is there timeline for the plan for the rest of them to, to be finished out? Or is it just...
So, the idea was to allow Leadership Golden Strip to complete this process and then most likely include it as part of the budget for FY '25, the rest of the panels. That was kind of the earlier conversations about this, on how we could complete that, that entire segment. And so, what, what is nice about this is it's not a permanent feature. So, if down the road, it's not something that we want to go with, or we want to change up the idea, these are removable panels that will be installed.
Thank you. Sorry for the new guy question. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the design of Leadership Golden Strip's proposed mural? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. The next item on our agenda, we are back to public comment. Since I didn't give that dissertation at the first public comment, is for those that were signed up and will be allowed to speak on manners other than personnel manners or manners under litigation, we'd ask for proper decorum by the members of council, speakers in the audience. Please, there are no personal attacks on council members, staff members, or members of the public. It is inappropriate to use a public comment period for the purpose of making political speeches, including threats of political action. Other than that, short agenda tonight, so up to five minutes in public comment. And so, our speaker tonight, Mr. Parrish, if you'll come to this microphone, be sure it's green, or just press it to turn to green, and say your name and your address, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City Council Members, Greg Parrish, 29 Oak Glen Drive. I know Seth, I met Seth before, I met Mark Public Works. Couple, three items that I wanted to discuss, probably more in the code enforcement area, two being the code enforcement area, the third being with Public Works. Number one, in our neighborhood, older neighborhood, we are dealing with at least three Airbnbs. And I'd like to get a clear understanding and reading of that law and what the law states as far as the city of Malden is concerned with those in our neighborhood and in the city limits. Where can I get that information so I can clearly understand where, where that, where we stand with that rule? Number one. Number two, this again falls under, Mr. Steenback, you might be interested to know this. Number 30, Oak Glen Drive, which is prominently known as the Cube House. It, some of you are nodding your head, like you know exactly what I'm talking about. This now is a two-dwelling under one roof. There are two, it's separated, and there are two people, one upstairs, one downstairs, living inside this single dwelling. So, I didn't know if the council was aware of that or not. So, I do have a concern for that, having commercial property mixed in with the residential property. So, we could, if I could make note of that, to, to possibly have that investigated and just find out if that is legal within the city limits of Malden. Number three, as we, as the city grows and everything like that, there have been some developments as far as the stormwater. There has been some construction out on our street, in Oak Glen Drive, where the, where the street was dug up, pipes replaced. And I wanted to get an update on what was considered a stormwater fund, I believe that was appropriated some time ago. I still have problems in my backyard with stormwater. And as the city continues to grow, and we still have to maintain the ailing stormwater system. I'm here with my neighbor, Mr. Purvis, who lives across the street from me. He has some piping in his backyard. He has a right-of-way that comes off of, I believe that's Clearfield, through his backyard, under Oak Glen, and then out through my yard. Well, this pipe is exposed, already separated, metal corrugated pipe. And I believe he has a meeting with some Public Works people tomorrow to, to look at this. But there again, I want to make sure that the, as the city continues to grow, that we are still keeping up to date and/or looking at trying to fix the existing stormwater system. In my opinion, it is, it needs some addressing. Not to the point to where, in my case, where it's been told to me, as it is on your property, it is your responsibility. I somewhat disagree with that up to a point. So, where do we stand with a stormwater fund? Or where, where can I also get some information on this fund that does or what is planned for this, for this fund? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. And I think you did meet Mr. Duncan, Seth Duncan. If he has your contact information, each one of those items, I'd ask Mr. Duncan to follow up with him and provide him the, the paper trail and the information we need on that. You got that? We good on that? All right. No one else has signed up, so the next item before us is council concerns. Anyone in council have anything? Hearing none, it would be council's pleasure on adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Motion, Mr. Mattney, and a second, Mr. Krailin? Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, the books will be 7:50 a.m.